The Finance Committee, the Beaufort County School District to order. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If, Robin, you can put the flag up, please.
A pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America and the public for which it stands.
Under God, indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. The agenda? Can we get a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda for the June 10 Finance Committee meeting.
Second. The motion has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Are there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? No, nothing opposed. So the motion is approved and the agenda is approved. Public comments? Robin says there are no public comments. May we have a approval of the May 13 Committee minutes? Now, those of a joint committee, but the first part of the meeting was the Finance Committee, the second part was the Operations Committee.
I make a motion that we approve the May 13 Committee meeting.
Thank you.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. Are there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay, no. Haven't heard of you, so it's passed.
I'm gonna abstain for that one because I wasn't there.
Okay, all right, one abstention. So the, the motion is...
Do I get to abstention?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Our first topic is the Operational Expectations for Financial Services. This is a 39-page document. I've had to go through it all. Earl says he's got part of it done. Rachel, have you had a chance to, to look?
I have.
Okay. How would you like to go through, would you like to go through it just page by page? And any comments that you have?
Yeah, I think that would be good. Or if Ms. Cushing, or not Ms. Cushing, Ms. Crosby has any comments that she thinks would be pertinent or things to note, then, you know, she can point those out, but I think it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I do, I do as well. So we'll start with page one, and it's shown on the screen now. Any comments on page one? If you could scroll up as slowly as we go through each page, Robin. Any comments on page one? Hearing none, go to page two. Interpretation and monitoring indicators. This is where it's been different. I, I really like this format with a policy and then how the superintendent interprets the policy and then what the monitoring indicators of that policy are. I, that's very helpful. Any comments from Dr. Wyszynski or Mr. Campbell?
No, I don't have any.
Nope.
Okay, anything on page number two? We go to page number three? Any comments on page number three? Continue to scroll down. Okay. No comments on page number three, we go to page four.
I'm going too slow or too fast, let me know.
All right, okay. Anybody have any comments on page number four?
The only thing I think that I had on, on these is I know some of them have the frequency or when it's going to occur, whether it's going to be annually or at a certain date, and I know that in the, in the in the OEs right now, as it is, it says like monitoring frequency at the very bottom. So I don't know if that's something that needs to just be highlighted here when it comes to the full board or just indicated. I didn't double check to make sure that it's noted in every single one, but I know there is a frequency that's in OE5.
Right, right. You know, they, they have the dates in some cases, which of course we didn't follow this year because of the uncertainties in the revenue issues, but I believe it does show when it's quarterly, semi-annually, and so on. But as we go through it, we can check and see that there's no, just... Any further comments on page number, is this five now?
It's four.
Four. Can we go to page five? Any questions on page five?
I don't have any.
Okay, we move forward to page six. Any questions on page number six?
I don't have any.
Okay, I'll move forward to seven. Any questions on page number seven? We move to page number eight?
Six.
This is a new OE?
Yes. Okay, this... Is this, hey, go back on page nine. Do we, have any questions on page number?
Eight and nine.
Is eight?
This one's eight.
I had a comment on page number nine. Okay, first one, 17. Maintain a 10% of Assured Value Capacity, 8% Funding, beginning in fiscal year 2022. When you first read that, you might not understand what that means, and we'll go to page number 16, and it will describe what that is. Not now, don't go into it now, just right now.
Okay.
When a board member first reads it, so what's the Assured Value Capacity of 8%? When you go to page 16, it tells you that it is the assured, how much we have property insurance on. That's how, 10% of that amount is what we should have in our 8% borrowing capacity. But it, when you just read, maintain a 10% of insured value capacity and 8% funds, it really doesn't explain that very well. It's, it's explained better, and we'll see it on page 16.
Yeah, it looks like this version, also just for clarification, this version of things doesn't have, in our actual policies, it actually has the date of the board action that was taken, and I believe this was a board action item, so not here, but if they were to refer to the actual policies, they'd see there's some more context.
Yeah, very, very good point. Can we go to page number 10? Any question on page number 10?
I don't have any.
Okay. Let's move to page 11, please.
That's it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any questions on that page, page number 11?
No.
Okay, let's move to 12. Here's quarterly reports for operations, referendum projects, and 8% capital projects. Now, here's something that I had a little bit of, tried to remember this, and Dr. Wyszynski, I'm sure, I think you can recall this more. We said that the board shall authorize and purchases, authorize purchases and/or contracts with value of .01% of the most recent approved comprehensive budget. And that's, that's what we put that limit, limit on a previous, not correct? Rather give a dollar amount.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's correct. Um, Robin, will you scroll up just a smidge? So on this one, number six, provide the board with quarterly financial reports for operations, referendum projects, and 8% capital projects. I know that there's already kind of a standard template that we've been using for that, but I know there's also been some discussions surrounding maybe clarifying the 8% and the referendum in some of those listings. So I don't know if this interpretation addresses that or not, but I would ask Ms. Crosby that, that be taken into account and see if that was already, you know, considered in the interpretation.
Ms. Crosby, what do you think?
So currently, we provide a one-page summary of all capital projects aligned into one column, basically, for the actual expenditures as well as the budget, and then we provide a detailed line-by-line record of every 8% project and every referendum project. So are, from what I interpret, from what you just said, are you looking for a, two columns of information in a summary format, one for 8% and one for referendum projects? And then continue to show that same level of line item detail as well?
I just, I just recall recently when we were going over those different projects and approving them or amending them, whichever, I can't recall when it was, but there was conversations surrounding that there was kind of some, it made it a little bit confusing, the way that was presently being done in the breaking out of the referendum and the 8% capital projects. So I think there was perhaps some concern there that it wasn't clear to board members. Perhaps anyone, I don't know if anybody else recalls that conversation. I didn't bring it up, but another board member did.
As I recall, it was a formatting issue in that they're mixed referendum and 8%. They weren't treated as separate and distinct when it was briefed to us, is that's what I, I call confusion. Because what they were doing is they were having it by school, and the school had both referendum and 8% being done, rather than having just 8% and just referendum reports. I believe that's what was the confusion and why it was recommended that those be, you could go to the school, but you would have two reports, separate reports for the school, so one would have title referendum, and then there'd be another chart that said 8%, so that it was very clear what was referendum and what was 8%. And that's my recollection. What do you think, Tanya?
Was that something that came out of a construction report, possibly? Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I can meet with Mr. Otting and see if that was maybe a monthly construction update, that maybe we can provide some clarification and separate those projects in some manner. So I will follow up with him and see if we can make some modifications that might clarify the two funding sources.
I think Dr. Watts has her hand up.
Yeah, can you scroll back, Robin, to where it was the point, I believe, 001% of the, what we had to approve?
I think it was down.
Down number seven?
Keep going. Sorry, yeah.
Number seven.
Okay, okay, I, yeah, I just want to be sure we had the right. Point 01, that's right. Okay, thank you.
Right. Okay.
I want that right.
Okay. Any other, any other issues on page number, that was 12?
Oh, you know what? Wait a second. Is that wrong? Because point zeros, I think that might be wrong.
No.
It's right.
Yeah, it's, it's of the total budget.
Yeah, I know, so like 350 million, right?
No, well, no. 270. It's the, it's operations, it's not debt service.
Oh, before, when, when we made the motion, it was the entire budget, including debt service?
It is, it's the entire budget, so...
I remember back when we had it. But if you do, okay, so it's point 01, right?
Right.
Point 01%, so it'd be 000.
Yeah, but doesn't that come out to be, maybe it's my math. Okay, times point, 0001, and that's 35,000. It should be...
Should be point 1%.
Yeah, that's what I see as the error.
Which is not, it's 000. Right?
It should be 1/10 of 1%.
1/10 of 1%.
It's correct in the actual policy manual, so that is an error in my OE report. I'll correct that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just noticed that.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Go back to 12?
Yes, 12. From one to 13.
13?
13.
Any questions on 13?
Nope.
Move to 14? Okay. Any questions on 14? Hearing none, we'll move to 15. Hearing none, we'll move to 16. Here's where, it was a clarification on the 10% of Assured Value Capacity of 8% funds, and this tells you more about how, how it's really done on the insured value of district facilities. I don't believe that this means, does that include, Tanya, district equipment as well, or is it just the hard concrete and buildings that we have?
That would be property values, so it'd be actually the facilities themselves.
And so it's facilities and furniture and everything inside, but it would not include all our vehicles and other things, is that correct?
That is correct.
And as I recall, the, the insured value is somewhere north of 750 million?
Yes, yes, sir.
So that's, I think I did the math, and that's around 60 million?
Yes, I'd have to, I was in the presentation on March 20th, I believe, to board from the financial advisor. So I can try to find that number, but we did, our capacity did exceed, well exceed that amount.
As I recall, our total capacity was somewhere north of 180 million, is that about ballpark?
Total 8% capacity.
Borrowing capacity.
It's in the neighborhood of, I, um, 80 to, I think it's going to be nearing 90 million at the end of the next fiscal year.
No, I, no, I'm talking, a total borrowing capacity, not, not including what we have already obligated. So in other words, if we had no debt right now in 8%, what would our total borrowing capacity be?
Um, I would have to pull up that um information and I have it in a financial report and I just don't have it handy.
It, it's well, it's well in advance, more than a hundred and eighty millions, I recall.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions on this page? No. Going to page seventeen. Seventeen.
I have that number now. Hundred and sixty million dollars was our eight percent debt limit. Um, the legal debt uh available was eighty-one point six million at June thirty of twenty twenty.
Thank you. Any questions on number seven, page number seventeen? No, sir. Okay, going to number eighteen? This is mostly blank. Any questions on that little bit of eight, of uh eighteen? Look at nineteen? Um, when I looked at this, I remind, I reminded myself of uh last year, maybe it was, might be the year before, but I think it was last year, walking down the hallway here and seeing a pallet load of computers, desktop computers in the hallway. Right. Uh, I hope I never see that again because if you look at this OE, you wouldn't be ever, ever, ever doing that and having desktops in a pallet sitting out here in the hallway. They should have been secured from the minute that they arrived in bulk and then started to be inventoried very, very quickly.
Yes, uh noted they, yes, sir, that is noted. Um, they were not new laptops. They were um four-year-old devices that came from our school. So they were uh inventoried, but they were checked out and they were getting ready to be recycled. So, but yes, sir, we have made arrangements to make sure that they're, whether they're new or they're three or four years old, that they shouldn't be in the hallway.
Yeah. Okay. Any other comments on page number nineteen? Right. Page number twenty. There's a part in page twenty about intellectual property. Going. Property casualty, uh must may, must be, not be on page twenty.
Go down. Sorry, keep going.
Keep going.
Right there. Right?
That's insurance. That's property insurance. It's, it's, it's different. I'll, I'll catch it when it comes, it comes through. I must have got the wrong page in my notes. Any questions on uh page number twenty?
Yeah, I have a question. So um, uh, Tanya, is this the maintained property and casualty insurance coverage um on district property? I think, oops, can you go back, scroll the other way? There you go, number one. Um, with limits equal to eighty percent of replacement value. Is that, that is, is that through the school board's insurance trust? Is that their standard policy or how did we get that um, come to that? I guess, those limits.
Um. That has been a board policy for many years. Um, I'm not sure where that limit came from.
Okay.
Um, but it, it was most likely recommended by um the insurance trust. So I can follow up to and with Ms. Dayton and um see if that is a typical uh replacement percentage.
That sounds great because I know over time, it seems like certainly in the private sector, deductibles have risen. You know, a deductible now is much higher typically than twenty years ago. I don't know, just, I just think we should look at it to be sure that's still the standard.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you for.
Any, any other questions on page twenty? Go to page twenty-one? Any questions on page twenty-one? Move to page twenty-two. Here's the property piece. Uh, please scroll down a little bit more. Okay, um. This is an area of risk and one of the things that is not mentioned here is you've got safe, let's go on down. It's uh not firewalls. Uh, wait a minute. Keep going down. This, that, this is technology. Let's keep going, go back up again. Looking for the intellectual property. Protect intellectual property information files from loss or significant damage. Uh, intellectual property is something that schools and people, other people get into problems with. And they get in problems with using copiers, using copying machines to copy copyrighted material and distributing to students with great, good intentions.
Hmm.
But one of the problems that we've had other dis- other school districts and other educational institutions is teachers have never gotten training on copyright and intellectual property laws. And this is something that uh puts institutions at risk because a teacher with very good intentions will simply copy a article from the Wall Street Journal, so to speak, and distribute it. And you cannot do that without permission if it's copyrighted material. And it seems like, oh, well, no one's going to check. Someone always does. So when you've monit- have monitoring indicators, there should be something in there about every teacher and staff should get at least yearly, I believe, a class or a just bullet thing saying, this is intellectual property. This is what you can do. This is what you can't do. That's, that was a comment that I had when I read this part right here. Any other comments on uh page twenty-two? Nope. Okay. So we go to page, yes?
Yeah, if, um, I know that past practice has been in the schools that the media specialists provide some PD on copyright laws. Um, so I don't know if it's uniform. I think you bring up a good point. I don't, but it is done in certain schools by the media specialist.
Yeah, I would just recommend that it be added as a, a monitoring indicator. And that could be exactly what you need to say is that the media specialists brief to staff and faculty once a year on intellectual property. And that would, that would meet that, I would think.
I'll make that change.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We go down to uh page twenty-three? Any questions on page twenty-three? Page twenty-four? Any questions on page twenty-four? Page twenty-six?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, sorry, twenty-five. Got it.
It's a short one.
Yes. Yeah. Okay. Any questions? None heard. Let's go to twenty-six. Here is a issue that you know, we have a finance committee, we have an operations committee, and then we've got technology. And that's really, there's the financial part of technology and investment and keeping track of the uh investment and the refresh or bringing in new technology and what the costs are. But technology almost seems to me to be something that should be separate and distinct that incorporates people that look at it both from a financial such construct and an operational construct. Because they're both so tied. And a lot of institutions, they will have a finance committee, an operations committee, and a technology committee. Uh, and technology committee kind of brings the two together. Uh, I just wanted to bring that up because as I was going through this, I thought, wow, this is a lot of hoppa stuff in this administrative technology piece that I don't, not sure, what, what, Tricia, what do you think about, about the operations committee weighing in on, on this?
Dick, I think you bring up a good point. Um, because uh operations, finance, and instructional. I mean, technology is the, the, the future. We saw that with the pandemic last year and I almost see it like you just said, as a, a, a separate entity just to um work with the technology needs of the district. I, I, I would endorse that idea.
Rachel, what do you think?
Um, some years ago, we did have a technology committee.
Oh.
We did. Some years ago, many years ago.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I think there's, and, and it's more than just, you know, thinking about the actual hardware. There's the software component of it and it's, it's, it kind of delves into both uh committees, but then it gets a little squirrely when it gets to us. So um I would support a committee that solely looked at the hardware and software and administrative technology and whatnot.
Dr. Gwadz, what do you think?
Yeah, it sounds very reasonable. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I went through it. I, you know, but I felt that it may be something that the operations committee could also take a look at that OE. I know you've got a bunch already that you've got to look at. But I would hate to uh make a recommendation, omnibus recommendation without the operations committee taking a look, especially if, if technology. Okay, can we, can we scroll down a little bit? Any other questions or comments on number sixteen? Number twenty-six. Seven? Oh, I'm sorry, twenty-six. Can we move to twenty-seven? And see, I see, when you get there, the education committee as well has a, has a stake in this uh bit. So you would almost want to have a committee that has a a financial wizard and a techno- a technology wizard, hardware and a software and an educational person. Okay, any other questions on, or comments on twenty-seven? If not, move to twenty-eight? Any questions or comments on twenty-eight? Hearing none, move to twenty-nine? Any questions on twenty-nine? Hearing none? Yes.
Um, Robin, if we could go back up to that top there, they reference a, a district advisory, a technology advisory committee. What, what, what committee is that? Does anybody know? And also too, you know, our technology plan um needs to be updated. I believe, Tanya, you and I talked about this, oh my goodness, a while ago, but um I can't remember. I think it was, we were given a reprieve at one point to not, and, and the reason the technology plan that's on our website right now is dated is because um we were given with the new administration and so on, but that technology plan needs to be updated and submitted soon, correct?
Um, the, actually, the uh plan has a template, the state provides a template to uh submit that plan and they have not provided the template as yet. So um we are looking to um develop the plan and place it into the template when that's provided. Um, and so many other, I've looked at other school districts and they are falling under that, the old plan as well and in um, and waiting on the new format in order to submit the, the plan that covers the current year and I believe that it's a, I want to say it's a five-year plan.
Okay, and I think that um this also speaks to your point, Dick, about many people, many groups needing to look at the technology. It's not just finance. It is operations and it definitely is instruction academic.
And, and the di- the district technology advisory committee, uh, that's a good question. Who, who is that?
Um, that is an internal group uh of stakeholders, uh from principals, instructional technology, um, teacher representatives. And so I'm not sure that they have met this past year due to the pandemic. Um, but I can follow up with Mr. Shohan and uh inquire on the last meeting time and the makeup of that committee. So it's an internal district committee.
Do they still have a community member on that committee?
I, I'm not certain of that, um, but I can definitely, I believe, I have sat in on at least one of those over the years and there were parent, there was at least one parent on the committee. Yes.
Okay.
Good questions. Any other questions or comments on page twenty-nine? Okay, can we move to page number thirty? Uh, I had a comment on this. Um, you know, right now, it's a big thing about cybersecurity. And I don't know that we do enough training for individuals. We, we, I found a reference to staff training in internet security and so on, but cybersecurity is much more than just what the staff does. Cybersecurity includes such things as Cybersecurity includes such things as, if you get an email on your district device and the firewall doesn't stop it, if you don't recognize it, you best not, that's how they get in and put a malware, or they send you a flash drive and say, hey, here's a good addendum to your textbook. Just stick it in there, and you get some PowerPoint slides, and it would, could have a malware embedded in it that you don't even know. That's how they get into these firms and shut them down. So, it seemed to me that cybersecurity should be emphasized a bit more with some monitoring indication of how well we're doing it. For example, how many, if you look at monitoring indicators, if you scroll up just a little bit, Robin? Okay, one of the monitoring indicators is how many times of phishing attempts happen? How many times have we had a malware? And I, I seem to recall that we, this district has had a malware attack in the past. Is that not true, Tanya?
True. I'm not certain about a malware attack. Mr. Shohan probably better to answer that question.
Earl, did you have a comment?
Yes, do, do you think, do you think maybe we need some, someone that has some type of training in cyber attack?
Well, we need to, we need to have training on how to protect ourselves.
Right.
Everybody that's got a, everybody's got an iPad or a computer, has possibility of inadvertently accommodate a malware attack or phishing attack on us. And one of the monitoring indicators, and I'm sure that our technology department been hit, but we need to know that. And what's been done, it would seem to me. Any other comments on that subject? Okay, so we move to page number 31. Now to page number 32. There was the evidence of staff training that I, I mentioned to you before on maintaining, maintenance and equipment. Any questions or additions to 32? Okay. Page number 33.
If I may, Mr. Guy.
Yes.
Um, I was just looking at our safe schools training that all staff do annually. There's one on acceptable use policy for all staff, another for cybersecurity overview. It's a training as well. So, those are the two trainings out of about 20 that we have each year that relate specifically to technology. So, I just wanted to put that in there. And I've also asked Mr. Shohan to see, see if he could jump on today's meeting, but I may have been a little too, didn't provide enough notice on that, but certainly we will get information about the training and what addition, what is in addition to the safe schools training that we do on an annual basis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, can we go to 33, please? Here is another one that has looked at this. You know, there's a, the finance part, and that's how much it costs and how we monitor the expenditures and, and the revenue that we get for this, but there's an operational piece too, about how, how well does the food taste? And, and how, how much are the kids getting? Because when I go to these student advisory councils, we, we don't get high marks, not surprisingly, about the food service, but how are we, how are, who is responsible for really looking at the operational satisfaction, if you will, with food service? That's not a finance issue as much. Is it possibly operation? Tricia, what do you think?
Um, Dick, I think you make a good point here. Once again, you know, we, we have found over the past year the intersection between operations and finance, that they're not isolated, they're not in silos. And this, I think, is another example of that. So, without a doubt, the operations committee could also look at OE 18 as well as the previous one you mentioned, which I think was OE 17. The, yeah, so we, we certainly could do that.
Is, you, you see, we should have something that has student feedback at least. Survey about the quality and everything so we can give it to the contractor. I know, I have seen that we have done something like that in the past, but it probably should be operation.
We do that, we do that on a regular basis.
Right.
Through, through the food service division, yes.
Yeah.
So, I monitor the entire operation, not just the financial aspects of it, operational. And they do regular student surveys to, of interest in what their preferences are. And then they have to balance that with the, they develop their menus from the feedback of the student surveys.
Hey, Earl, do you have any results of these?
Yeah, I was going to ask Mrs. Crosby, do, we have never had a nutritionist, have we?
Uh, yes, sir, we have a registered dietitian for the school district.
Okay, all right.
And so, this is the first time, we actually developed this OE this year, for the first time ever. There's never been a board policy relating to foods and nutrition services or technology. So, I brought both of these forward this year for the first time. Uh, so, you have not, and the reason for that is you have not had the opportunity to see what great things are, are happening in our food service and our technology programs. There was a, a, a reporting mechanism for technology once per year, but not for food service. And so, we developed this in order to be able to get those things before the board and report, at least on an annual basis, on all of these areas. How, what participation is doing, you know? Is the meal price having to increase this year, or are we under a free summer program? So, that's the whole reason why we're bringing these, this policy in particular forward, so that we can report to the board.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, can we go to page 34? This is more on food and nutrition. Any questions on 34? Move to 35. And can we move to 36? Here's the monitor quality. But evidence of particular periodic surveys and evidence of periodic surveys to students. But it seems to me that there should be, as you've mentioned, something to the board as well on the operating piece and the quality piece. Any questions or additions on 36? Go to page 37, please. Now to 38, please. Questions on 38? Go to 39, the last page. Any questions on the last page or any questions or comments on the entire product? If I could say something, I, I really appreciate the work that was done on this. I, I really, really liked the format. It's logical, it, it makes sense, and something that we can use, the superintendent's evaluation. It gives very specific things that we can put into the evaluation. And there's a lot, obviously, a lot of work done on this. And if I could give you my compliments, I really appreciate what your team did to pull all this together and done.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Very good.
Okay, if there are no other comments, what, what would the committee like to report to the board at our next board meeting?
Um, I'd like to move that we recommend these OEs for acceptance, with the exception of 17 and 18 going to the operations committee for their review first.
That's fine. Second, okay, it's moved in second. Robin, did, uh, did you get that?
I'm typing. Motion that the finance committee recommend the OEs for acceptance, except for OE 17 and 18.
That should, that should be going to the operations committee.
Yeah, and in review of the operations committee, I would recommend.
Committee for review.
For review, right.
Okay.
So, it's been moved, and Earl, did you second?
Yes.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and we will bring that up at the next board meeting. The last item on the agenda is a, is a really neat item. Thank you, Dr. Wyszynski, for coming up with that. Did you show that student, on, to offer student activities accounts slide? Thank you. Dr. Wyszynski, you brought that up. Could you, would you like to talk about it?
Yes, sir. Historically, on the finance committee, I had noticed that there was a, a rather large amount that was sitting in the district account for student activities. There's ones that are punched out by school, and that account just had a very large balance. I believe that some of it has since been spent down, but I thought that it was good to take another look at it because it was my understanding that it was the result of fees coming based on devices or something, student fees for devices. So, I just wanted Tanya, to, for Tanya, an opportunity to speak to it, and also for us to get an update on where it is in that account.
Uh, so, this time, at the end of the last fiscal year, we had a balance in the district office student activities account of $1,087,000. At this point in the year, as just a few days ago, actually yesterday, we had a balance of $573,209. So, it's on the right-hand side, the far bottom. So, the student activities account at the district level makes, is made up primarily of two main items, and that is the tech, uh, technology usage fee, and then the facilities use fee. So, um, the district technology fee is, is the usage fee that's imposed $20, $20 per student to, for the use of each device. So, we collected, um, let's see, we collected funds this year approximately $405,000, and we did make a concerted effort to bring those funds down. That, we did have spending this year of $858,000. And so, the balance, the beginning balance was $856,000, and now the ending balance is $403,000. So, we are using that to purchase, we used it to purchase a large, made a large purchase of district laptop bags and OtterBox cover for iPads. And there were a number of purchases as well for replacement devices. And the most prominent use of them is the repairs of our broken devices. So, we did make an effort to make sure to bring that down, and we made tremendous progress this year. And we'll continue to do that, to get this balance down, you know, as we move forward.
Um, Mark, Mark has joined now, just to let you all know.
Great, great. So, the facilities use fees are another area. These are generated from the rentals of facilities. And so, we have not generated any, very little revenues this year. And so, that balance is declining based on, there was a part-time staff member who's since retired, that was paid for, her, her part-time wages were paid from this fund to manage the facilities use program. Uh, so that balance is also dwindling down as we move forward. Um, and so, there are a few other, smaller pots of money that have been in place for, of a couple of years, depending on the source of funds. And I have recently, I think maybe a month or two ago, I gave Dr. Stratus a copy of this report, indicated which items were in her area, and that these were sources of funds that were available for uses in these various areas, and gave her some background on, on the, the source of revenue and what, what its intention was for. So, she is currently working on a plan for the use of those funds, and we should see, excuse me, some movement in those pot, those sources as well.
Ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, on the district technology usage fee and the amount that was expended this past year, was that prior to the board approving the new purchase that included the bags and the OtterBoxes?
Was the purchase made before the use, or, I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Yeah, um, I believe that we recently approved using, I think it was Acer Funds, a technology refresh, and that included bags and OtterBoxes and things like that. So, my question is, was, were the expenditures that were made from 1155 prior to us approving that? Because I'm just, I'm trying to get a handle on, did we purchase a bunch of them and then buy some more? Or is this like ones to handle the, the tablets and whatnot that we already had?
Um, okay, so I see placement charging, Apple technology, replacement parts. The bulk of the, um, bags were purchased, it appears to be in, uh, Janu- on January 29th of this calendar year, of $269,000. So, it was, it was around the same time as those devices. Mr. Shohan, are you on the call?
Yes.
Do, is, were those higher ground student device covers purchased for the K through two laptop devices that were approved, or K through two devices, some were? uh K through two laptop devices that were approved, uh, K through two devices, some were Apple, some were laptops?
Yes.
Okay, so then do we see savings then on what we had originally anticipated expending for that? If we used it from this fund?
Um, when when we made the initial purchase, the um, the bags for the um kinder kids were not in that, I'm sorry, for the second grade was not in that. So we covered it with the um technology fee.
Okay. Yes, I'm just confused because I thought that everything was included in that um that approved as our expenditure. So, um, so moving forward then, I think, at least it's of my opinion, that the district technology usage fee, since that's such a large amount, and I believe that comes in every year, correct me if I'm wrong on that, that we should probably be looking at some type of policy or um practice where we utilize this fund to help with our refreshes. It to a, to a larger extent, at least, because I know that we're gonna have to do some refreshes uh in the future. I don't know if any other members have any comments about that or?
Uh, Earl, you got any comment?
He's on the phone.
Oh, okay. Alright, I have, I I think that's an excellent idea. I, that should be paying for refreshes, and it should not just be sitting there in a fund that we can use for whatever. Uh, it's, it should be dedicated because that's what the parents are paying for is uh keeping their equipment up to date, maintained, and of course, refreshed when they become outdated and outmoded.
Yeah, and and I'd probably ask too, Tanya, if there's any way that you could look at our historical spending on the refreshes and whatnot so that we can maybe get an appropriate amount or percentage that perhaps um is is good to use, just so that in the future, there's not confusion on, are we gonna have to um, you know, approve some expenditure from somewhere else when we really could be using this fund to help offset that uh to a good extent?
Right. So I will do some, I was just trying to um determine the annual spending, and I'm not picking up the proper account here, but um we can, oh, I know why I'm choosing the district office level and it's collected at the school level. So um, I will provide some information about the level of spending and the level of revenues that we receive. It's uh really, we need to look at the level um revenue, what are we collecting, uh, to ensure that we and do cover those um annual expenditures for the repairs. And we often have a number, um, sometimes have a number of refunds in that account as well. So um, we also, as we're collecting funds for uh lost chargers and and various parts and products, parts of the um technology package that we distribute to students, um, those charges come in as well. So um, we'll take a look at the pattern of spending and revenues and maybe come back with a recommendation of um what uh that amount could be or a percentage or some something, because the amounts will fluctuate on an annual basis. So it does look like we're we're generating about four hundred thousand a year. Um, and so uh with, we do offer uh waivers for students that are in uh your, in times of hardship. So uh, you know, in times of um like these with the pandemic, we could have some fluctuation in that. Um, but we'll take that into consideration and come back with an analysis. Um. Perhaps at the next finance committee meeting or something like that.
That'd be great. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
I have a comment uh about the facility use fees. I attended last night's uh county comprehensive plan open forum for North of the Broad. Uh, there was a lot of things brought up, and one of the things that were brought up was they felt that the county did not have any plans for expanding recreational facilities for youth in the rural, especially in the rural areas. And of course, a comment was made, well, we can't even use the gyms anymore. The schools are shut down, which of course was because of COVID. But um, obviously, and that, this is not the first time I've heard complaints about the lack of uh the district to support uh athletic programs, either in the use of the gyms or the use of the athletic field. Now that we have, are getting turf fields, hopefully, we can make those turf fields more available and also charge a fee for it. But we should also make sure that we open up more of gym facilities. And I assume the facility use fees pays for the uh janitorial cleanup and and having somebody from the district there over time, if you will, to supervise. Uh, you can't just open the gym and not have anybody from the school there to monitor what's going on. So is that a an issue with the facilities use fees? Are we restricting? I know we have from COVID, but does that facility use fees allow us to have our facilities open more after COVID?
Um, we do have, um. I'm I'm not sure how uh to answer that. Not not sure I understand the question, but um, once the facilities are opened back fully, then we will be able to begin to generate those facilities use fees again. We can have performances, we can have um um various events in our schools, uh, dance recitals, churches, and those sorts of things. I believe we've begun to open it up um gradually here at the end of the year. Um. Since I believe about Easter time, particularly uh for some of our church churches. Um, so we will be generating revenue in those areas in the future, and we do charge um a portion is for the actual facility and rental, and then we do charge based on the timeframe that they are present, the, a number of hours for custodial and for uh electricity charges and so on. And a some, a portion of those funds um are brought back to the district level. The majority of them uh are left at the school level. So uh based on a bore, uh, a, an administrative rule that dictates the split of funds. Um, for example, a hundred percent of the funds from a performing arts center stays at the school. It has to replace the lights, uh, repair various things in the, in the performing arts center. Um, also to fund the person that run the soundboard, um, so theater manager type this um expenses that have to be um paid out to run, to manage those complex electronic boards. Um, so at the, other than the, outside of the performing arts center, there is a split, uh, depending on a nonprofit or a for-profit entity, it could be a forty-sixty split between the district office and the school on the, on the proceeds of the rental or or a fifty-fifty split, split or for some for-profit or nonprofit agencies. So um, it is a share that we, a calculation that we have to look at each individual contract to see what that split is and then uh transfer the funds back to the district level. Uh, well, yeah.
Yeah, let me give you my specific question. Have we ever received funds from Beaufort County or from the cities which our schools are in to allow our facilities to be open for, say, the gyms or say, the sports fields? Have we ever gotten any funding from the county or the cities for our, use of our facilities?
Um, the only time I can recall receiving a fee from the county is if there were a town hall meeting from an elected official. I believe we may have um some fees on that, but as for athletic facilities, I'm not aware of any charges for uh use of our facilities from an athletic perspective.
Do you remember any of that happening?
No, none. The the the, the problem is, is that you have folks that wanna use our facilities when our students aren't using it.
Correct.
Uh, and and many times you would say, well, okay, if it's football, you said, uh, well, you can send it to a middle school. They don't want that. They want to high school. So that's, that's the problem.
I can assure you, the the schools are heavily used, especially in the middle schools and high schools, the gyms, the ball fields by our own teams, and so those get first um, first right of refusal or or they, they have first access, climate priority access to those facilities. And so that's oftentimes, particularly in those seasonal times, basketball season, volleyball season, and so on, there is not a lot of um flexibility because those teams have practice every single day or games.
Tanya, does PALS, um, is PALS from the county or do do they chart, do we get charged, do we charge PALS? When they used to use our facilities?
It's my understanding that they no longer use our facilities. They have constructed um facilities of somewhere else. In other plate Buckwalter, for example, and other areas. Um, so it is my understanding that they do not um use our facilities. We do use PALS facilities, however, particularly Robert Smalls. Um, and Ladies Island Middle baseball and softball teams do not have adequate ball fields, so we do use their facilities.
Do we pay them?
They are charging us. Um, I saw a bill recently for the lining of the fields. Um, so, yes, sir.
Any other comments on the uh report?
No, sir.
No, sir.
I believe we have covered that topic, and I don't believe there's anything else on the agenda except for future topics. Uh, Earl or Rachel, do you have any future topics you'd like to discuss?
I do not at this time.
Not this time.
I I don't at this time either. Uh, any other board members have anything that they would like to say before we adjourn? Well, thank you, uh, Tricia and Tina for attending, and I appreciate it. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robin.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Bye-bye.